Okay, call the meeting to order.
This meeting and Mayor Board Alderman for City of Cleveland is now in session. Anyone have business come forward, you shall be heard.
Thank you. Greg, were you offering for prayer?
Yeah, Father, we thank you for the day that you provided for us today, Lord. We thank you for every citizen in the City of Cleveland and thank you for this wonderful town that we live in. And also thank you for this wonderful leadership that we have here. We pray that everything is said and done today is done in a way that's pleasing to your ear for the betterment of our city. Ask us all in your name. Amen.
Amen, amen. Thank you. We have one visitor today, Mr. David Griffith. David, if you will, state your business, please.
Good morning.
Morning, David.
Thank y'all for letting me come before you this morning. Uh, I'm representing the, uh, Cleveland Country Club as president. And two years ago, we had, uh, some members get together and pull their resources and have a fireworks show for the members on July the fourth. Last year, we did not have time to, to get this done in time, so we did not have one last year. We've had some members that would like to do it again this year. Uh, of course, I have talked to Greg Jackson, uh, about what we need to have as far as a fire truck and some volunteer firemen out there. Uh, we will have it, of course, out there off the golf course, away from structures and houses and, uh, also time wise, I think sun sunset is around eight, eight fifteen, so that's when we'll do the fireworks, so it won't be late at night. We'll probably do them somewhere close to sunrise. Uh, we're extending the pool hours and having, and having, uh, food for, for July the fourth, so kind of make it a big celebration for the members. Uh, so we'll do it, probably be about a ten fifteen minute fireworks show and then should be over with way early by nine o'clock, before nine o'clock easily.
David, you might, excuse me.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead. Okay, I'll go ahead. Uh, the neighbors, did you say you were gonna let them know the immediate neighbors around?
We, we can do that. Yes, sir.
That would be, I know last time it was a great event, but we did get some folks calling and saying, well, we didn't know, you know, when, when it's that close.
Yes, sir.
If you would do that.
The last time that ordinance was lifted, it was for the, uh, Cleveland Central Championship Football Game. And they kind of extended it a little longer than what was infected. And yes, there were some complaints about neighbors and all, um, so.
That's just a good, good thing to do to be.
Absolutely.
Yes, sir. No problem.
Okay, all, all the questions, was it Robert?
Mayor, I just wanted to say he met all the criteria and, and Greg, if we could, uh, make sure that the neighbors are not, don't have a problem, rather, and, uh, I don't see why not. So I'll make the motion with, with us meeting the criteria.
Robert made it. Danny second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Have a great event, David, and thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
All right, we'll go to engineering.
It's here.
Who we got here?
Clinton.
Clinton? Okay, we, we'll go back to engineering if that's the case. Uh, Danny?
Yes, sir. Uh, the first thing I have would be the consent agenda. I need a motion second through this group.
So move.
He had made the motion.
Second.
Ryan second. All in favor, say aye. Okay.
I've got a little memo in the Dropbox for your update and specifically on here to talk about, uh, I wanted to call your attention to, uh, we've worked, uh, we, a, a good number of the folks with the city, Billy Trotter and the chief and myself and the police committee and have a proposed, uh, ordinance that we're gonna bring up at the July meeting. Um, would, uh, you know, ask everybody to re- review that. We put in a good bit of time on it. I, um, talk about it now or
Okay.
about it when, but, uh, it's all in there.
Has anybody got any questions, uh, they want to review a little closer? Any questions of any of the Alderman?
Uh, I, I mean, I don't have, I don't have a problem with us approving it now, uh, and if we got some issues down the road, we can, we can correct them.
No, I reviewed it pretty much and, you know, I don't have any questions at the moment.
Okay.
Um, i- if you'd like to, uh, you know, the gist of the ordinance since we're live is it takes into account what's been going on around the Delta and takes into account the measures that your police department and, and community development do i- as far as an overall community centered approach to making Cleveland safe. Uh, but one area, uh, and, and you already have as a chief man, I pointed out to me yesterday, again, you have in place, Cleveland has for years and years by ordinance, a juvenile curfew. Uh, it's eleven o'clock on weeknights, it's twelve o'clock on midnight, uh, you've always had that. And the police department deals with that most of the time without issuing a lot of citations. It's, it's like go home. And, uh, you have in place, uh, things like your, your bars close at twelve. The one thing that you don't have that has people out and gathering is primarily in B one, B two, and B three, the parking would accumulate to get out of their car to go get food. And, and so an ordinance that basically says shut down at midnight, you can still have drive-throughs, you could still, you know, order by door dash. Because those do not lead to people congregating. That's not people getting out of their cars. And, and so that's what this ordinance will do. Uh, suggestion would be, if you wanted to go ahead and adopt it, I, I would suggest you probably adopt it with, uh, without making it immediately effective, so it gives everybody time to know. Uh, you can take that emergency measure and, and, and adopt it now. Uh, has a good bit of findings in it. I would suggest if you want to adopt it now, uh, ask it and approve it. Yes, sir.
I wanted to ask, would this include large gathering on corners and, you know, what people just congregate, large crowd, would that be included in this also?
Well, the places that people would gather, Ted, are gonna usually be in a business place. Uh, you can't gather in a park. Most of the city's land that is, is, is designated as part of a park, and so we control that and we shut that down. This kind of doesn't leave any place for people to be pulled up and gathered, and that's where these problems around the Delta end up having happened.
Why, yes, I noticed sometime on different corners, you see a large group gathering there talking.
And, and one of the things with that, that the police department encourages is if, if, if folks are spot that and troubled with, by that, they'll just call.
Call into the police.
You're probably not gonna have less than a minute from somebody from CPD is gonna be there.
And I think, um, Dudley might be able to speak to that, like if it's a, if it's property owned by someone, um, the property owner has to give the police. Am I right, Dudley? They have to let them know that there's no loitering there, right Dudley? You're, you're muted Dudley.
Is it this correct?
So he, they, in order for them, in order for the police to, Dudley, you want to speak to that?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, so if they're, if they're gathering on a corner, uh, they're on private property. Well, what we need from the residents is to call us and then we can ride by and if we see something, we can disperse that problem. But as long as they're on private property on their, you know, their house and the landowner is letting them, we just have to monitor what they're doing.
Need to post it too, right?
Sir?
It would be good if they posted too, right?
Posted what?
Sign up there saying no law on their property.
Yes, yes.
Oh, okay.
And one of the things you have in your ordinance is, is that when community development does their inspections of these commercial properties, they're gonna make sure that, for instance, uh, these, these businesses that are open at night do have no loitering signs up, and that enables the police department to do something.
Yeah. That was good. Excuse me, go ahead.
I think the ordinance did a good job of justifying every one of the points that Danny made in here. I mean, I read through the whole thing. I think, I think he did a great job. And, uh, I make a motion with him.
Well, I have a question first, please. And I, I would say that, uh, thank you, um, Turner Griffith, you did a great job with that, but I am concerned about the sanctions. If, if they do not, what, what, what happens next?
Well.
Cause I, I heard you just say, oh, we tell them to go home and some of them don't go home. So how do we deal with that as it relates to, um, fining or what type of sanction happens with that, chief?
Uh, so if a person don't go home and there are lot, loitering, no loitering signs up, they will be issued a loitering ticket. Now, I'm not aware of what that fine would be in our municipal court, but if the judge found that person guilty of that, that loitering ticket, he would be fined. Now, um, what the ordinance says is the business, I believe, and, and Danny, you can correct me on this, cause I, I don't have the ordinance in front of me, but I believe it's, if the business does not close and, and keeps it up, it's a thousand dollars. Is that correct, Danny?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And it's a thousand dollars a day.
A day.
Um, it, it's got some teeth. It's, it's not, you know, you would do a criminal citation to the person who's, who's staying in that loitering thing. And, and as far as the business, they're not gonna operate if they're gonna get a thousand dollar fine. Everything's gonna shut down at midnight, so.
I just want to make sure that we have those in place, so, uh, they will understand the businesses and the, uh, individuals that are continuance to do those things or understand that there's gonna be a stiff punishment or a sanction for their, uh, inappropriate behavior.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, the only other thing that I would ask you about, as written in the Dropbox, um, and in my mind, I was, I, I was, Chief and I both were kind of thinking about doing this in July, but it's written in the Dropbox. This takes effect immediately upon publication. That's one of the options available to you as, as, as a board. You can unanimously say it takes effect as soon as it's published as opposed to it takes effect in thirty days. So I'd call that, I mean, if that's what you want to do, that's how it's written.
Carry it back to your motion then. How would you like to word that?
Cause typically we're required to publish an ordinance for thirty days prior to it taking effect.
Under the circumstances of what's going on around in the Delta, that certainly would fall within what you can do. We cite the statute that lets you do that if you so choose. It has to be unanimous among the board to do it effective upon first publication, though.
I, um, I make a motion that that ordinance be effective immediately.
I would suggest that, ma'am.
Okay, Kirk second. You made the motion. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, unanimous? Okay?
Um, oh, uh, the next little thing I have on here for y'all, um, there has been, uh, a good bit of development. Everybody knows you, you see all these stores that are selling hemp products. Well, the Attorney General addressed that and, uh, last week, the Attorney General's Office came down with an opinion that say these hemp products of Delta, this and that and the other are illegal. Uh, and, uh, the police department has already immediately, this came down on like the eleventh and by the twelfth, they were going around making sure the businesses that sell that realize it's no different than selling marijuana. You can do that through a dispensary with, with all of the regulation, but you can't do it at like a convenience store, and they've already letting them know. Um, but beyond that, the reason why I wanted to call it to your attention is, not me this time, Mayor. Uh, the, uh, but the reason I wanted to call it to your attention is that I'm gonna need to talk with Heather on how, how that affects our drug testing policy with the city and if, if at all, and then, uh, talk with Billy and see if there is anything, uh, I'm actually gonna meet with Billy and Katie and look at under the land development ordinance, if there's anything we need to do otherwise, uh, whether it's the discussion with Billy will be, okay, is there something with our signs and signage? The discussion with Heather will be, okay, is there something in our personnel policies with our drug testing that we need to address this? Because in the eyes of the state of Mississippi, Delta whatever is no different than regular marijuana. So that's the report.
Okay. We'll go back. Uh, I, I think we have engineering. I think Josh maybe. Josh?
Guys, I just got a couple of things for you this morning. Let me get back to the agenda. Uh, first up, I have the, uh, change order for approval for the Shelby Sewer Basin. It's under budget. A lot of this is, uh, items that we have found, it's updating quantities mainly, but a lot of it is issues that we have found after we completed the full camera survey of the sewer system. But we are still under budget. We're requesting approval for the change order.
Don't move.
Second. Rob, Robert made a motion. Danny second. All in favor, say aye. Okay, what else?
While we're talking about Shelby, we've already seen a big impact of an improvement on, on the, we've only completed probably half the project. We're already seeing a lot less stormwater infiltration and a lot less pump runtimes at the Shelby Sewer Basin. So we're already seeing, seeing benefits. I think it's gonna turn out to be a really good project. Uh, next up, I have a change order for approval for the Bishop Road drainage. Uh, the biggest, uh, we are still under budget by probably two hundred and fifty thousand under. The biggest issue is we're having to replace the six foot pipe that runs beside the water well. We've uncovered it and found it was, uh, it had some construction issues originally and they, they did some kind of hokey, um, connections where they did homemade connections and stuff. And, uh, anyways, we just wanna, we've got the money, we wanna go ahead and dig it up and replace it right. We're there.
Danny made a motion.
Second.
Second, Zena, all in favor, say aye.
Only other update, I was letting you know that the, our street paving contractor is starting early. Uh, we had, originally we're gonna start till after the fourth and they had some crews free up, so they're starting today. And I believe they're gonna be starting on Church Street doing milling and overlaying, so.
We got a bunch of massive holes around town. Uh, you got one on Fifth Avenue that's been wide open for quite some time. What's, what's going on with that? Is that, is that something y'all doing or is that something, um, where, does Danny's doing? What, what is it?
What was the first part of that question? I couldn't hear.
Fifth Avenue, that hole.
Yes.
Several holes around town. Fifth Avenue's got a major hole.
Yeah, that's, that's one of, uh, it's a combination. So, uh, Fifth Avenue, one of the sanitary sewer point repairs is located in that area. That giant tree crushed, grew into the sewer pipe and it collapsed a section of pipe about fifty foot long. Once the sewer pipe was collapsed, it started taking on material, then caused the storm drainage to collapse and then caused the street to collapse. So, uh, it's kind of a mess, but Steveo took care of the tree. Our contractor is actively working on fixing the sewer now. We had found some gas line conflicts and everything else. Once he finishes that, then it'll be back to Steveo to fix the storm drain and then the street. So, uh, that one's, that one's a mess, but it's all getting handled and, uh, the sewer will be fixed this week, so.
Okay, thank you.
And I, I think we did a post that, that it's like, it's gonna be several weeks from, I've had, I've been keeping up with that through Clinton. And I think, um, he told me it was gonna be just because of the stages of the process, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Josh, that it, the whole thing is gonna take like several weeks before it's complete.
Yeah, cause the contractor, no one can work until the sewer was done. The sewer got delayed because the tree, and then once they started digging, there was gas lines and conflicts and then we had to get Atmos out there. And so that has been addressed. The sewer's working. So once he finishes, Steveo's gonna have to bring in a contractor now, rebuild the inlet, fix the storm drain. Uh, and then finally back to the street. This is kind of similar to what happened on, uh, Court Street a few years back, when we had that giant sinkhole and it was a combination of sanitary sewer, storm drained. And that one actually had a water line included. This one does not have a water line, but, um, it is a, it is a mess, but it's, we're finally, uh, we're working in the right direction now, so.
Hey, Josh, would you mind sharing? I know, um, Clinton and I talked about the list of streets that are gonna be worked on, on the street improvement project, and I know we wanted to share in this meeting since it is on YouTube. I'm sharing on Facebook as well. Um, just to let citizens know to get their vehicles off the streets and maybe if the Alderman could help get that out in their wards because I, I know the contractor had made a comment about several vehicles on the side of the road, I believe on Church. Um, and I think some of the other roads as well that were, or some of the other streets that were gonna be involved in that project. Could you share some of those streets so that we can help get that word out, please?
Yeah, so the streets, uh, the streets including this project, we're doing Church, uh, Eastover, portions of College Endearing on the east side of Bishop, Ninth, White Street, Mullins, South Street, Maple and South First. Uh, I do not have the order the contractor's taking. He's, he's addressing this order by availability of other crews, so this, you know, that's not gonna be the order they're completing, but they are starting on Church. The contractor is gonna go around, supposed to be talking to homeowners ahead of time, um, but any help in public awareness, that, you know, we will be working in these areas and we'll need streets off, uh, cars off the street right away.
Hey, Josh, if you guys will send us an email, I'll be delighted to get over there and try to make sure because.
I'm, I'm gonna send that out. Um, Mr. Sanders, I'm, I'm gonna send that email out and we're also putting it on, uh, Clinton sent me the list yesterday. Um, and I told him we would share it in the meeting today since it's live. I'm putting it on Facebook and I was gonna send all of y'all an email with that list that he sent me. So I'll put that to you. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anything else?
No, sir, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you for the good work. Uh, Greg Jackson?
Uh, the other thing I want to bring to your attention is, uh, I have, um, been in contact with Leland Fire Department. They are interested in our current ladder truck that we have. They have made a formal offer through email and they've got it approved by their board um, for one hundred thousand dollars. Um, the only reason I haven't brought it before vote tonight is cause I'd like to have some paperwork involved in that and, uh, I'm waiting on EEP Pierce Manufacturing to give us some type of formal, uh, quote as far as an appraisal on the current truck. They have had an offer from Brindley Mountain, which is a fire truck wholesale dealer. Um, but not a lot of people buy fire trucks, obviously, and, uh, it's a little under fifty thousand, forty seven thousand is what they're offered. Of course, they would be reselling it, which would be in the hundred to a hundred and twenty five thousand dollar range. So I believe Leland is on point. But I'd like to, um, just let y'all know that that's what's coming up on the next meeting. I will have a formal, um, offer from Leland presented to you, also with hopefully some paperwork showing what the current value of, you know, who really knows, there's a broad range about what a fire truck's worth, you know, it's really worth what somebody would pay for it.
Right.
But, um, they are very excited about it. Um, it won't affect their rating like it will ours. We're, uh, we're trying to maintain a class three rating and they're just glad to get a fire truck. Like us, they were not, um, they were not successful in any of their grants to purchase a truck. So this is gonna, this would really help another municipality. The other thing that I was thinking was moving from one municipality to the other would be easier for the city to be able to make that transition. I see, uh, our attorney is shaking his head at all. It would, it would be very easy. So hopefully this will be a win-win for the city. Win-win for Leland and the last caveat is they would not be able to take possession of the truck until the delivery of our new truck, which would be the end of October, November. So we would be able to work together in that aspect as well. They're gonna wanna know something by the next meetings because they're gonna have to, um, fix their station to where it would house this particular sized truck. And they're, they're sitting already, but, um, still waiting on a couple of things from EEP, so. You know, if, if I would probably wait until the end of next meeting, but if you're comfortable with that much information to go ahead and send it over to Leland, we can do that. But, um, I just wanna FYI y'all, so you don't have any surprises. That's a pretty big number to throw around without, um, I just want you to be aware of it, so. Or you go over there, we leave it there.
Questions, anyone?
I agree. Uh, I think, uh, Greg answered my question if that was a fair price and it sounds like it really is. So, you know, if they need some kind of preliminary approval from the City of Cleveland, I would like to put that in form of a motion.
But before we do, Greg, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Uh, have you explored or, or looked into removing any of our decal and the lettering that's on that truck?
Oh, it will be stripped before it leaves.
Yeah.
Yeah, there will be no, nothing on there. Even the Delta State thing will be removed. Uh, our logo would be removed. It would go back to just a striping on the side of the truck, which is reflective and, yes, sir.
Uh, I have a question. So are we talking about allowing them to, if we approve this, to allow them to get the truck now or we still possession of it until we get ours?
Excellent question. No, ma'am. It would be, um, after the delivery of our truck and when our truck would be in service. So Cleveland would not recognize any time without a ladder truck for protection.
Okay, I have another question. And then if we're gonna allow them to purchase their truck, what happens if they have an issue there and or we're gonna have some type of agreement where their truck is allowed to assist in any way? And a fire, I don't know, how would that work? With the agreement between us and Leland, we so choose to, uh, to go with that and allow them to purchase our truck.
Another excellent question the city needs to know about. Um, we are under a statewide mutual aid agreement. All the governors and all, I mean, the mayors and all that signed that. Leland is under that as well. And actually in their letter, when they, they did the offer, that they sent an email to me as well as to Michelle, I forwarded to her. It actually says in the letter that they would be more than willing to provide that truck as mutual aid if we were to have a catastrophic incident in the City of Cleveland. So, uh, you know, you've got twenty-five miles up the road, you've got another ladder truck that we know's been well maintained. And, um, I'm sure if they brought it to Cleveland, then you would have the, you know, you would have the manpower to, um, yeah, it's just a win-win all the way around. So yes, ma'am, they would provide that.
Okay, and vice versa as related to us with Leland, if, uh, our truck is not in yet. Is that correct? Would that be my understanding that we will allow them if they have a catastrophic, um, event that?
Do this right now. Yes, ma'am.
Thing.
Actually, when, when Greenville, uh, when their ladder truck went out, um, it was looking good, the large fire they had. We, uh, we actually went down there and put out looking good with our truck. And, uh, mostly the municipalities, if you look behind Public Works in Greenville, both of their ladder trucks are sitting in the back. Um, they're just sitting there. You know, they're gonna go to auction one day or something, break pennies on the daughter, dollar. This is kind of a win-win for us if, if we can move forward with that. The only reason I didn't present it tonight was because I wanted that paperwork, but, uh, these, uh, these folks are on a verbal, um, the research, what we found, that's a deal on that truck for both parties.
They do have the letter from, from Leland in, in Dropbox.
Okay.
They do have that. They just, they don't have.
I said Gary's. Oh, okay, back to Gary's motion. Got a second by Danny?
Second.
I think Kirkum has a question.
Morning.
Morning. And I'm sure Danny will take care of this, but in the bill of sale, uh, to include a disclaimer of Eva Express implied warranties, uh, and sold as is without warranty. Yes, sir.
Okay, yeah. Uh, I'll understand it here. So, uh, motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, Clint?
Morning. I've got a couple of things for approval this morning. One's a, uh, amendment number one for the, uh, apron expansion project. And then a change order number one for Roy Collins' construction of the, uh, expansion project.
Second.
This is actually the first of, uh, several change orders and amendments that are coming as part of this little agreement. All that's, I guess, currently the worst being prepared now.
Okay, the first one, the barge design, need a motion?
I made that.
Motion. Robert second. All in favor, say aye. Okay, the second one's the Roy Collins, uh, change order, need a motion?
So move.
Ted made the motion. Danny second. All in favor, say aye. Okay, thank you. Uh, Christian? Parks are, parks are wrecked.
Good morning. Just, uh, just in the update with our little Dizzy Dean tournament, um, excuse me, we had a pretty good turnout. Uh, our teams did well. We had seven teams in the state tournament. We had two championships, uh, two there in third place. Uh, we had, our six U boys had, I think they could've went a little bit farther, but we had, had an injury and I think that kind of hurt them a little bit, but overall, we're gonna have our seven U and eight U baseball team and go to South Haven to represent us, uh, in the World Series. Trying to get a, convince a couple more to go, but, you know, people are going on vacations and things like that. To get it done, it was, it was, it was a God thing. Uh, he held the rain off as much as, much as he could. And the guys, you know, Tony and the guys put a lot of prep work into the field the week before, which I think helped, helped tremendously in doing it. And then a lot of early mornings to get it ready for, for that game, but we had a good turnout. And everything went smooth, I hope.
I think he put in his report how much. I think he put in his report how much sure dry they used. I think they went through a lot.
Yeah, but good job and we appreciate it.
Great job, you and your staff, both.
Okay, Michelle?
Um, I have just a couple of things real quick. Um, I wanted to share with everyone that, um. Our budget session, the dates have been set. And those will be August twelfth through the fourteenth. Y'all wanna put that on your calendars? And, um, also the second thing that I have is, um. We discussed last meeting about the, um, or we've discussed several times. About the fluoridation process and the discontinuation. Um, we do have to, at some point, it doesn't have to be today. But I just, this is just a reminder that we do actually have to take board motion on that. Whether it is to continue the discontinuation or whether you decide to resume fluoridation. We do, um, it is required that we take board motion on that. So it's just a reminder that we need to do that.
Anybody have any thoughts on that?
I have a, uh, point. I I've received a call from a dentist and, um. He was very upset about it. I tried to explain the situation about COVID and the scarcity of it cost. But, you know, it was Dr. Reagan and a great friend, great dentist, and he just really was upset about it. I told him I'd share his thoughts with the board.
Well, I I think we hadn't had it since twenty-one, so we've gone on our fifth year.
Right.
That's what I told him.
I don't know. I mean, out of the twelve hundred or so, uh, water systems in the state, I think maybe a hundred and fifty still do it. So, uh, I think it's a subject we really don't know that much about. And I think years ago, it it was, uh. You know, the dentist kept, really got behind that and and it may have some real value to it. But most of the bigger towns are are not doing it. And, uh, well, you you can tell yourself if it's twelve hundred. That have systems that only a hundred and fifty use it.
Yeah.
Kind of speaks for itself. But if y'all wanna, uh, table, you know, we don't have to vote today.
Right. I just wanted to remind you that we do have to take action on it. So.
So we might want Thomas to get some more information to pass on to y'all.
Do we, do we have any public input on that?
Not other than that phone call that he just mentioned.
Oh, okay.
Did not receive any other, any other input.
Okay.
I say table it.
Okay. All right, we will do that. Oh, that on you, yeah?
Good morning. Uh, the first thing you will see in your Dropbox is, uh, the remote access policy. So we currently do not have one in place. I have created one and, uh. Last week, Michelle and I finalized that with developing a procedure that the department heads will follow. In asking for requests to Michelle and that will be approved through Michelle before any remote access is given to any employees. Um, but that is just in there for your review and we'll, uh, ask for approval on the July meeting. The next thing is I have two under the employee action recommendations needing approval unless you have any questions.
Uh, I will ask that with that remote access policy, that we would get our attorney to look at that. To make sure that we are in order and in line.
I'll forward that over to him this morning.
Yes.
Okay, need a motion on the employee action?
Make, I think the motion is with with the inclusion of, uh, Alderman Norman West's assertion.
I didn't understand what he said, ma'am.
He said that you wanted the, it's two different subjects, actually. We just voted on the employee. So if we're gonna do the action thing, Robert.
Okay.
We're, I'm looking for employee action.
I second the employee action.
Okay, Robert made the motion. Is that your motion, Robert? Okay, and Danny second. All in favor, say aye. Okay. Okay, thank you. Any, any alderman comments? Okay, uh, Kurt, you wanna farewell your?
I will and I, I wanna thank everybody for their service and it's been a fun ride, sixteen years. Mayor, congratulations, your retirement well earned. I'll make a motion with adjourned.
Kurt made a motion. Danny second. All in favor, say aye.